All right, it is 7:01 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the city council calendar item listed on the front page of MissionKS.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robin, please call the roll.
Thomas.
Boating House.
Here.
Loudon.
Here.
Riard.
Here.
King.
Here.
Inman.
Here.
Josie.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Thank you. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so we will move on to our special presentations. We do have several special presentations this evening. Our first presentation is in recognition of the retirement of two longstanding mission businesses. The first is Tailored Hair, which has been a part of our mission community since 1991. Tailored Hair was started by Janice Taylor on August 1st, 1991, and will celebrate their last day prior to retirement on June 28th, 2023. Janice loves operating her small business in Mission where she founded Tight Knit Community that supported small businesses. She has built a community of friendship in her salon while watching clients' children grow up, making memories and sharing stories. The second retiring business is Gingerbread House Daycare, which operated in Mission for over 30 years by Jane Stevens and later by her daughter Melody Abernathy. Gingerbread House provided children and learning for many of Mission's childcare and learning for many of Mission's children. We wish the owners of both businesses great success in their retirement and thank them for their commitment to the Mission Business District and to supporting and encouraging a thriving and vibrant mission business community. Thank you both so much. All right, next, I am proud to proclaim June 2023 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Mission. We are a community that respects and actively welcomes and protects all those who reside, visit, or do business in our community. Recognizing and celebrating diversity helps to build a community that promotes harmony and mutual respect. Pride Month celebrations take place across the country every June to commemorate the Stonewall riots of 1969 and to recognize the impact that LGBTQ+ people have had on our history locally, nationally, and internationally. I urge all Mission residents to join with me and the entire city council in working to ensure that everyone has the confidence to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred based on gender identity or sexual orientation. Our final proclamation tonight recognizes June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month and June 15th, 2023, as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Mission. As a proud supporter and advocate for the Communities of All Ages program, we regularly look for ways that older adults that treat older adults with respect and dignity, enabling them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital participating members of our community. Elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation of our seniors is a serious public concern, and it is important to take action to raise awareness in our efforts to prevent abuse of older adults and to engage and empower seniors. I encourage you to join with me in honoring and celebrating older adults and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of our city. Our final presentation tonight is the introduction of our new building inspector. Mr. Scott, will you please make the introduction?
Council was gracious enough to offer us a proclamation recognizing Building Safety Month. And we were introduced our building inspector, but he only been with us for two days. So he was just still trying to figure out up from down. I didn't quite think it was fair enough to throw him to the wolves just yet, so. But he is good enough to come back tonight, so I want to introduce to you Devon Bryant. Devon's been with us now for four weeks. Devon comes to us from Quinetta County Unified Government KCK. And he served as a building inspector there for about four or five years. And prior to that, he worked in the Public Works Department as an equipment operator for a number of years. I promise you wouldn't flout us now, so. But if you see Devon about town driving the truck, that's what he's doing. He's inspecting buildings and getting out and knowing our businesses and developers and all the things that are going on in the community. So Devon, do you have anything to say?
No, no. It's on the spot. Yeah, no, I just appreciate the opportunity and glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we would have issuance of notes and bonds, but we do not have any items related to the issuance of notes and bonds this evening, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has eight items tonight. Our council committees met on June 7th and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the city council adopting consent agenda as printed items 4A through 4H.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Josie.
Aye.
Boating House.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Thomas.
Inman.
Aye.
Riard.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right, next, we'll move into our public comments. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on items that are not included on our agenda tonight, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person meeting tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Emily, do we have any comments online? All right, I see one hand in the back. Kathy, if you want to come on up. And Terry.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to make a presentation to actually the city. I'm Kathy Borier Shussel, a resident of this proud resident of the Communities for All Ages Gold Level City of Mission, Kansas. But I'm actually here tonight as a member of the Sustainability Commission and a member of the Planning Committee for the Environmental Fair. And you all know Terry. So it's my pleasure to present to the council tonight. Last year, Mid-America Regional Council presented the Environmental Fair as the best event, best environmental fair for 2022. And so this is actually being presented to the city. And it's a testament to the city's really overall commitment to sustainability and to the Sustainability Commission. And this was a highly collaborative event with nine Northeast Johnson County cities. Each of their city councils, Terry was, well, you know Terry, she made a replicate of this for all nine cities and each of the nine cities are being presented this. But this is actually the original, the original plan. And again, it's just highly collaborative, which all of the nine cities were active participants in the planning. But I had, and so it's really a testament to the city and its commitment. But I can't stand here without saying something about this was Terry's vision. And it's not only in her vision, she rolls up her sleeves and does all the hard work except for making the presentation. She's too modest to do that. And but I also want to mention that John is, John Arnett is also a member of the Sustainability Commission. And but also the city's commitment to this extended to Emily, who was a really important part of the organization. The website was the official publication and promotion for the event. Natalie at Sylvester Powell was just amazing. She worked with John, who was the venue chair. And how important that was to have a local resident be the venue chair, because there were so many, as you can imagine. We took over that, the whole Powell Center, Community Center. So on behalf of, I think, all nine communities that participated in this, thank you for your commitment. And it resulted in this recognition. I don't know who I give this to. Emily.
Thank you both, and thank you for the leadership of Terry and the rest of the Sustainability Commission on that event. I think when I went to the event, one of the most exciting things was that folks who were helping from other cities and vendors were already talking about next year, which I think is the number one signal of a successful event and love the community building, not only in Mission, but across the region and looking forward to year two. September 23rd, everybody. All right, next, we would move into our, our Planning Commission items, but we do not have any items from the Planning Commission, and so we will move into our committee reports. Councilmember Reihardt, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on June 7th and considered three items. The meeting minutes and CMB application for natural groceries were approved under the consent agenda. A franchise agreement with Google Fiber will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Google Fiber Kansas LLC has proposed a franchise ordinance between Google Fiber Kansas LLC and the City of Mission. The ordinance proposed would grant Google Fiber a franchise to provide, operate, maintain, and control its internet services with the city. Until recently, Google has operated its facilities in the right-of-way under the authority of a state video service franchise granted through the Kansas Corporation Commission in accordance with KSA 1223-EDC. In 2022, Google Fiber began notifying cities of its intent to discontinue video service while continuing to provide broadband and voice services. With the discontinuation of its state video franchise, Google needs city authorization to maintain its facilities in the right-of-way. Accordingly, Google's use of the city of city right-of-way would be approved, would be governed by KSA 122001, the general franchise statute to provide utilities with right-of-way access. Google has negotiated this form of franchise with most other cities in Johnson County. The agreement was negotiated through a group of local municipal attorneys with the City of Overland Park being the first to adopt the new franchise agreement. Under the new franchise agreement, Google will pay the city a franchise fee of 2% of its broadband services. This is less than the city's standard 5% fee, but the current fee with Google and other providers only covers video services. As Google reduces and eliminates video services in favor of broadband, the city's 5% franchise fee would eventually disappear. The revenues generated by the 2% franchise fee include the new agreement are expected to equal or exceed the current fees generated by the current video service fees. Mayor, I move the city council approve the ordinance granting a telecommunications franchise to construct, operate, and maintain communication services facilities within the public right-of-way to Google Fiber Kansas LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Thomas.
Yeah.
King.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Davis.
Aye.
Riard.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Boating House.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and does that conclude your report?
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes.
That's okay. Great. Next up, Councilmember Loudon, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
The Community Development Committee also met on June 7th and considered eight items. The meeting minutes, ordinance revising Section 103.115 and adding Section 103.118 to the Mission Municipal Code for Land Disturbance and Right-of-Way Permits. Biennial Bridge Inspection, Lamar Avenue and Foxridge Drive, Evergy Traffic Signal Buyout, Mission Family Aquatics Center Shade Replacement, repeal and termination of a special use permit to operate a microbrewery and drinking established for Sand Hills Brewing and the repeal and termination of a special use permit to operate microbrewery and drinking established for Red Rock Brewery were also approved under the consent agenda. Cardboard recycling bins for the Downtown Business District will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. 7B, cardboard recycling bins for Downtown Business District. The city staff was approached by the owner of Lulu's Boutique about the possibility of having cardboard recycling bins at strategic locations in the Downtown Business District for businesses to use. Currently, there are no recycling opportunities for downtown businesses. With cardboard presenting the most significant challenge, providing cardboard recycling bins at a strategic location behind businesses downtown will help local business owners while taking the burden off the one bin located at the community center. GFL, the city's solid waste hauler, has agreed to provide six cardboard recycling bins for 120 per month per bin. This equates to $750 a month or $9,000 a year. Bins would be serviced once a week. Staff will work with GFL and the downtown businesses to determine the appropriate placement of the bins. Staff is recommending the city provide the funding for this cardboard recycling opportunity from the general overhead budget and the general fund for the remainder of 2023, with ongoing funding sources to be evaluated as part of the 2024 budget discussions. Mayor, I move the city council approve the contract to provide opportunities for cardboard recycling opportunities in the Downtown Business District through GFL at an annual cost not to exceed $9,000 or $750 a month.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Riard.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Boating House.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Great.
What question, Mayor? Yes, Debbie, we get an update when we start looking at this maybe three months down the line and see how we're doing, how much cardboard is being collected and what the the data analysis kind of portrays, so we can see, you know, which direction we're going, because there may be other materials that are just as important as cardboard that we may be looking at, but feedback would be really important, I think. Thank you.
I like it.
I see heads nodding yes from, from staff, so thank you. All right, we do not have any unfinished business tonight, and so we will move into our new business. We have one item of new business, which is approval of a contract with Yates Construction LLC to replace 132 feet of the outdoor fence at the Powell Community Center. Mr. Almany, will you please share the details with the council?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So staff brought forward an action item in May about recommending a fence replacement contract with Mid-America Fencing Company in an amount not to exceed $13,479. Following that council approval, staff reached out to the contractor and due to material and labor cost increases revised their bid to $16,478.17, roughly $3,000 more. So then staff reached out to the second lowest bidder, which was Yates Construction, to determine if their initial bid was still valid. And they unfortunately revised their bid, but for less than the $3,000 increase. So their revised bid came in at $14,905.44, which is only guaranteed until tomorrow. So staff is recommending that the original contract award to Mid-America contractors be rejected in a new contract authorized with Yates Construction in an amount not to exceed $14,905.44 before time runs out. So as discussed, this was not originally budgeted for in 2023 capital improvement plan, however, staff is utilizing $15,000 of trash can and recycling can replacement funds to fund this and will push that to 2026.
All right.
Any questions?
Okay. I would now entertain a motion on this item. We have a motion and a second. Are there any council questions or discussion on this item? Yeah, Debbie?
I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you always looking at alternative ways to pay for things that really makes our job so much easier. You always have a backup and an alternative plan, and we appreciate it.
Thanks, Councilmember Cream.
All right, seeing no further questions, Robin, please call the roll.
Boating House.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yeah.
Loudon.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Riard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, there being no further business items for consideration, we will move into comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone in the council have something they'd like to share this week? Yes, Trent?
Thank you. I just wanted to give a quick report. I played in the Northeast Johnson County Golf Tournament last week with Officer Morris, Officer Bashir's, and Brent. And it was a great time. I think we all had a lot of fun getting to know each other a little bit outside of council. And we tied with Prairie Village at seven under, but we lost on the tiebreaker, so we did not bring the city trophy this year, but we did get them in the same score. And yeah, it was just a lot of fun. I'd like to thank Brent and the officers for letting me pal along with them that day. It was just really cool, so. Thanks. And sorry, Brent, I let us down on a lot of those shots.
All right, Ken?
Two items. First, I did attend the KC Housing Locator webinar that happened this week. They unveiled, Mark has now a new housing locator. And it's very sophisticated in the ability to look up housing availability by cost and so forth and by location. The mission is not included in the roster of city, but that's because the roster only includes those that are active that have been populated by available housing. So we need to encourage our housing apartment building and so forth to include their information in there as well. Secondly, I just wanted to say, thank you to Sina Duran for all the work that you've done over the course of your tenure here. We're going to miss you. And I know you'll hear that from others as well, but I wanted to personally say thank you for your service.
All right, seeing no further comments, we will have our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of the boards, commissions, and committees. So first is council members King and Thomas for the Sustainability Commission.
I'm going to defer to Emily. We had a great Sustainability Commission meeting last month, but there are so many people that are such energizers on that commission, and they're all going in different directions, making accolades for the city and positive impacts around. John Arnett is one of our favorites, but I will tell you that Josh Thede, who has been our chair in the past and has been on the commission since its inception, has several things going on. He's looked at the magazine at all types of different things between his walkability, his car, his choices that are environmentally sustainable. And Emily, if you could comment, he's got so many different areas going on, you might be better to describe to this.
Sure, and I'm sure some of you have seen, but he was highlighted recently in the Shiny Mission Post as being a Kansas State Walking College Fellow, so he will be developing through that program a walkability plan for Mission, which is just really exciting. He's always making us proud and doing things above and beyond. And then he was also highlighted in his fiancee for having solar panels in their home in Mission, so. He's getting a lot of press lately, but he is always doing lots of good things.
Any further information? Very good. All right, all right, so we will move into our next report, which is Councilmembers Loudon and Reihardt for the Parks Recreation Entry Commission.
Last week at the Parks and Rec Entry Commission, we looked at the Waterworks project update to see the, I guess, final design. And I actually did get to see the playground equipment. And it's, it's good. It's good. I was happy. That might not have been part of the meeting, but I, you know, pressed him to show me anyways. And I approve.
Sneak peek inside track over here.
It's really cool. I can also.
Yes, Mary was there?
Yeah, yep. And then, of course, the, as Penn said earlier, that, or as we discussed earlier in our meeting, Mohawk is close to being done, it looks like July 17. Again, there's been just issues with getting the parts and bits that make the park in and to, and then to get them put in. And then Broadmore Park, we're looking to get that, at least that one part that's so bad of the trail fixed. It looks like, as was talked about earlier, that the bids have come in and we're supposed to making a decision there.
The Mission family picnic is July 8th, so they're always looking for volunteer. I'm sure you still look into it. You know, you know who to reach out to, guys, but I have heard, I don't want to like spoil it, Penn, but there's supposed to be like a drone light show. Is it already out? Okay. So that's on the record too, but that's pretty cool, since, you know, we haven't been able to do fireworks with businesses there. This is kind of a cool opportunity to have something kind of special and neat there and yeah, that's all that I had too. So yeah, Jeff, Penn, or Jen.
I do, I do have one question on that. The Mission Monthly had the event running from 6 to 8. Will the drone light show be after dark? Will it be later than that or?
Yes, so most of that food will happen 6 to 8.
Okay.
Drone light show, 8 to 10-ish.
Awesome.
So we planned 6 to 10.
Great. And then next, we'll hear an update from Councilmember Boating House on the Mission Magazine editorial board.
Actually, I'm going to have to defer to Laura on this one. I was unable to make the previous move.
Shiny magazines.
So this is to, you know, there are a lot of familiar faces, anybody else? Here we are, theming issues. This is our sustainability issue. So our cover is a family that is doing backyard chickens. We've already talked about Josh Thede and his fiancee Ellen for their solar panels. And then we have Hillary's in-laws also featured for their geothermal in their home, so if you didn't recognize or make that connection, that those are some very special folks. Then we have Jessica Carlson and her biking her kids to school, which is really fun. In addition to, although you can't see his face on page 15, and I'm, Mary, I still need to send you photos, but Mary's husband Lee and his backyard beekeeping, which is really fun. Then we had a feature on the Sustainability Commission. Some of the climate action work that was done several years ago by the city, several of our businesses and the things that they're doing. Elevate Organic Salon, Sand Hills Brewing, Urban Prairie Coffee, Mission Board Games, and some of their sustainability efforts, the hopes that other businesses will sort of read and start to take notice of some of that, so. And then the Kids Feeding Kids Program. If you're not familiar with Peace Garden, you had an opportunity to read that. It's a really fantastic eliminate, working to eliminate food waste repurposing of that food and the teacher, there's a teacher at Horizons who just sort of accidentally got seated at a table with these folks at an in-service day and has brought that program to Horizons High School. And so that was a lot of fun to be able to feature that. So we are off and running on planning our next issue, which will focus on sort of home renovation landscaping ideas, and then we will have our fourth issue of the year will be kids and pets, and then we will end the year with an issue on arts and culture, so.
Great, thank you. So next up, we have the mayor's report. So this evening I have, oh wait, I skipped. Sorry, Ben. Ben, I'm jumping ahead.
Really boring this half of the year, but for the last time this year, I don't have anything to report as we haven't, we haven't met since the last council session. However, the first meeting of the year for the Family Adoption Committee will be Thursday, June 29.
Excellent.
Going up soon.
Sorry, sorry, I forgot.
Oh, that's fine. I usually don't have much to say.
All right, so then this evening, we do have one appointment to consider for the Sustainability Commission. So you heard Laura make reference to Elevate Salon being featured in the Mission Magazine. Their owner, Jen Shouten, I put before you the appointment of Jen for the Sustainability Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2024. And I'm very excited about the idea of adding a mission business owner to one of our boards and commissions, so do we have a motion on this appointment?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Mayor, I move the city council uphold the appointment of Jen Shouten to the Sustainability Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2024.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
King.
Aye.
Riard.
Aye.
Loudon.
Loudon.
I.
Davis.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Inman.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yeah.
Mission carries.
Right. Welcome, Jen, and we're excited to have you join in volunteering for the city. Next up is our city administrators' report. Laura, do you have any items you'd like to share with us tonight?
Couple, Mayor. Some we've already covered, the picnic and the laser drone light show, which it's not, it's not fireworks, but I think it's going to be a great addition and hopefully a tradition for us. Just a reminder that the city hall and the community center will be closed for the July 4th holiday. The M-FAC will close at 6:00 PM that evening, and then there will be one day delay in trash service that week. I am also happy to report that we have made an offer and it's been accepted and we have a new budget and finance manager going through the background process, tentatively scheduled to start on July 5th. So we're excited about that. And then I would invite Emily to come up and tell you about a meeting that she attended earlier this week, and then Robin has some quick business updates.
It's just a fun informational item, but local governments and chambers of commerce were invited to a World Cup public information session. So 2026 seems like a long ways away, but we have a region of hosting ahead of us. And so I just thought it would be educational and sort of informative and fun to share back what I learned. The KC 2026 is a now established nonprofit with a board and they will be working diligently between now and then. They're really focused on FIFA deliverables right now, and there's just a lot. We don't know still, of course. But the event will be June 11th through July 19th in 2026. Kansas City is just really looking great as one of those groups. It's the biggest World Cup there has ever have been. So even the number of matches we thought we might host here at Arrowhead has increased to potentially seven, eight, maybe nine. They can't make promises, but we'll have a lot here. They did a lot of work comparing the World Cup to the NFL Draft, just in terms of scale, scope, expectations, business impact. And wanted to remind all of us that the, that the World Cup is, you know, a major travel destination for so many around the world. So they'll save up, save up, save up, not go on vacation and then come. And there's downtime between matches. And so there's lots more economic, cultural impact that our region can have and show during that time. So I don't know what else to say really, except just I wanted to let you know that Mission was represented at that meeting and that we're paying attention in ways that we can support with all of our partners, of course. I don't know what exactly our role will be. There will be certainly a large call for volunteers for wayfinding and Kansas City really shines in that. The NFL gave feedback that when they opened the volunteers, they needed 1,500 and they had 2,000 within a very short period. And then they had 7,000 in the NFL Draft. People told them to shut the sign up down. And so I think our hospitality will shine again in that way. And that's something that every World Cup really tries to strive to do as we host international represent, representatives. We won't know the final schedule until the end of 2024, but playoffs, actually like which teams come and what we'll really be looking at are through like March of 2026. So don't hold your breath on that. But we did talk in the meeting about translation services, you know, public safety response, really being able to host the visitors from the teams that are coming so that we can just have, you know, friendly and safe relations with everyone. So they're all thinking that transportation plan, sustainability plan, human rights plan, all of these things were kind of mobilizing on all fronts. And they did really emphasize that what we do for the World Cup will be in place after that. So thinking about the legacy of hosting something like this, they gave an example of the conference. I think it's the Church of the Nazarene or something that is hosting in 2027. They're coming. Maybe I'm getting some of this wrong, but the point is they have people from all kinds of other countries and they know that by the time that that happens, we will have our translation services in place. So they thought, you know, it's a great, it's a great bet to count on Kansas City. One of the Kansas City highlights that they really emphasized was that we're a four-hour flight to all the competition cities. So that was really impressive. So that Heartland representation is really strong. So just want to share back.
Great.
I have a couple of business updates for you. As most of you know, Crumble Cookies has opened earlier in the month at 6021 Metcalf, and they seem very popular. And then we also have an application pending for the construction of a swig soda company at the northeast corner of Berkeley and Martway. It's on the planning commission agenda on Monday. So stay tuned for more information about that. And closings, we have our two retiring businesses, Gingerbread House Steak Care and Tailored Hair, and we wish them both the best. And then the Mission Arts Center will celebrate their one-year anniversary this weekend with some fun events planned. So check out their Facebook page for more information. I have.
Great. Thank you, Robin. And I think the Mission Arts Center, that their special event, if I'm remembering correctly, is six to nine on Friday night, and it's a joint premiere. And then also their anniversary celebration. Yeah. All right. Next, we move into executive session. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. So the governing body will adjourn to executive session for the allotted time. When that time has expired, the governing body will reconvene to do one of the following. One, extend the time required for discussion and return to executive session, or two, continue with our regular city council meeting. As a reminder to the public, the governing body may take no binding action in an executive session. I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council recess to executive session in accordance with KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss a personnel matter of non-elected personnel and for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property. Also attending the executive session will be City Attorney Dave Martin, Police Chief Dan Madden, and City Administrator Laura Smith. The open meeting will resume in the council chambers at 8:38 PM and 60 minutes.
Right. Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in paper, say aye.
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 Right.
Can we bring our phones?
All right, I would entertain a motion. Or sorry. We are returned from executive session. I would entertain a motion.
May I move?
Oh, you got it.
May I move the city council return to executive session in accordance with KSA 75-4319 B1 to discuss a personnel matter of non-elected personnel and for preliminary discussions related to the acquisition of real property. Also attending the executive session will be
Dave Martin.
City attorney Dave Martin. The open meeting will resume in the council chambers in 15 minutes at 8:53 PM.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.